All right, just a refresher as we get started here. These are mic on, mic off with the buttons and nobody on Zoom can hear you unless you turn your microphone on.
All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to the March study session here on March 1st. First off, I'd like to thank the town for providing us cupcakes here as a celebration and I appreciate it and I'm sorry for those of you who are on Zoom that you don't get a cupcake, but Mona, I could hold one for you if you'd like. And also, Anne, if you want me to keep one for the next finance committee, I'll hold that for you. But anyway, okay, we'll get started. The primary purpose of this is primarily to look at the budget, but there's also a second item on the agenda. So why don't we start with the roll call, please? Here? Okay. Next is public comments and a public comments here would be on a special session or only with regards to the items that are on the agenda. So you can speak now or you can wait until those agenda items come up and then speak at that time. So are there any public comments that you would like to bring forward at this time? Okay? Yeah, please.
Okay. Tap, tap. Thank you. Sandy Critten, I had a whole speech that I'm not going to bother you with. This is in reference to the electric or gas banning the gasoline power leaf blowers. Just so you know, I I do appreciate all that you do and I would like to tell you, hang on, I'm going to get through my notes quickly. I drove here in an electric car. I have one of the first solar systems in Atherton. It put in in 1908 or 19.
Yeah, that is the first one for sure.
And I, and I walk around my neighborhood regularly. It's my opinion that, that this is out of the realm of what council people should be doing. You should be managing the departments and managing the funds that we, that you collect on our behalf. But I think that this is out of your job description. This should be put in another venue rather than a town council. I also think that it's important that you, if, if you want your, if you want to run electric leaf blowers and, and not have gas, I want to give you that right to do that, but I would hope that you would also respect those people that want to have their gardeners use gas powered leaf blowers as well as let them choose what they want until maybe some laws are passed by another organization other than the Atherton Council. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandy.
And I'm, thank you for letting me go early. I have a five o'clock commitment.
Okay. Thanks a lot. Okay, great. Carol?
Never let it be said I don't beat a dead horse, but I actually read the, the write-up for today. And I think you all did a pretty good job of a compromise. I'm not giving up my gas powered leaf blower until the last minute that I have to. I share the opinion over there, but that's not why I'm here tonight. So I think that there is going to be a migration to electric. Fine. I'm here because of the spare the air day. I wrote y'all a letter, what, a year ago, whatever it was, that I thought it was impractical. I still think it's practical. So tomorrow is trash day on my street and several others. I think about the world in terms of what's practical and pragmatic. And I do not see the landscapers knowing what day spare the air day is. Yes, you can download an app. I don't think they're going to. I'm not going to. I think about when I was in the corporate world and I had to leave for work at seven o'clock in the morning. The last thing I was thinking of was am I going to remember to tell the landscaper, you know, to, to do X, Y, Z, and I certainly would not remember to tell them to do the spare the air day or think about the office. Thirdly, where it really comes down to, to I think a make or break. Suppose today is spare the air day and my trash day is tomorrow. Well, I have three trash cans of greens out in front of the house. I counted just six houses down from me as I was coming over here. We had 21 green trash cans. What do I do? I tell the landscaper, most landscapers come the day before the trash day. I fill the trash cans today, tomorrow, you know, or I tell them today they can't do it because it's the spare the air day, but trash is tomorrow. So I have three full trash cans of green and no more. Next week comes, what do I do with the debris? Cause the three trash cans are already full. So you don't catch up unless you put it in the back of a truck and you haul it away. You tell the landscaper to haul it away. Because trash cans are full. It's completely impractical. Not only that, if you have several weeks, as we did a couple of years ago, we had the fires that were going on. What are you gonna do? Have no, no landscapers for two and a half weeks? When we had spare the air days. So I applaud the goal, I really do, of, of helping people that have asthma that are out walking, as you brought up Diana, because I have asthma. I applaud all that, but I just think it is very, very impractical and that's the only part that I still have a problem with. Everything else I think is a very good compromise, but this one, I have some heartburn still. So a perspective. Thank you.
Thanks. Are there any comments online? Okay. All right. Well, then we'll close public comments here at the beginning and we'll start with the budget kickoff and so Robert, Robert with his 50 page presentation. Everybody has a copy of the, the small PowerPoint that you did. I passed. He has promised to go through it rather quick.
Okay, that's fine. I would go through it very, very fast.
Oh, I forgot to give you one. All right, I'll go get one.
Hey. Presentation. Go ahead, Robert. Okay, today's the budget kickoff. We're going to just kind of high overview of 22, 23 year end fiscal year projection. Go over our major revenue sources and five year forecast, major expenditure categories within our five year forecast and then budget process and the budget calendar. That mid-year, we discussed that the budget general fund revenues were going to be at 23.5 million expenditures at 18.5 million and our transfers out of 4.5 million, 3.3 million of that is to the CIP. So we're ending with a net balance of 458,000.
So the difference between the, the bar chart on the right and the one in the middle is the addition of E-RAP?
Correct, correct.
And E-RAP came in $459,000 less than we had budgeted, is that right?
No, that's just the net revenues over expenditures to 458,000. The middle bar chart is just showing the revenues without counting the E-RAP. We put in E-RAP that's below the line. We add it back in as we presented in the mid-year. So that made
So the middle graph shows 1.88 million expenditures under budget. And the E-RAP reduces that?
It's, the under is not expenditures, it's just under, meaning we're under the net, the net fund balance is a negative. So it's a negative without adding in the E-RAP.
I see.
Correct. So it's just taking the 21 million, the 18 million and the four, the 4.5 million, which are expenditures, 18 and the 4.5 against the revenues and we have a negative 1.8 million.
4.504, net transfer out.
Correct, correct, correct.
Indirectly, E-RAP.
Correct. So that 4.5 is not the, it's just a transfers out. The E-RAP is in the, is a below the line revenue and, and correct, correct. So the 458,000, sorry, go ahead.
So, so the net, net for the year is that we have in our aggregated fund balance, 459,000 less than we had projected at budget time, is that right?
At budget time, correct. We, we're at 458,000, just the net based off of where we're projecting revenues and expenditures. As we went over the mid-year budget, there were some additional expenditures that were added to make it the 18.5 million. The original budget was 22, 23 budget at, at you see at 17.7 million and expenditures. You see that, that amount. We added the mid-year budget increases. So we had already a negative 2, 2.3 million and what we're projecting in, in the budget.
It's important to, to note that some of that 4.5 million does not come from our revenue that we're getting in for the year. It comes from our unallocated general fund balance. So all that you're doing, Robert, then is saying in actual revenue for the town, the fiscal year 2022, 23, we're going to get 23.5 million. This was the last slide.
Over expenditures.
And then expenditures are 18, but we're also expending another 4.5 million from unallocated or from surplus revenues to the CIP fund. So the net of all three of those numbers means that our unallocated general fund balance goes down by 458,000 at the end of the year.
Correct.
Okay, but CIP, I suppose, goes up by 4.5.
Yes.
So it's kind of a sleight of the hand. In fact, we have four million more in the bank when you count CIP and general fund than we had at the end of last year.
Yes.
Which is more than we projected we would have when we did our budget.
Right, because this only focuses on the general fund, doesn't focus on the revenue that goes up in the CIP fund.
Correct. So our revenues are expenditures where it's in the positive, but when we do below the line, the transfers out, the E-RAP, the whole net is, is what you see as a 458,000. So
Using slide.
So if you take out, yeah, yeah. So I'm just, the transfers out is the 4.5 million. The revenues are expenditures. So this is just showing the net of the, the net effect flow through. So this, for 22, 23, this shows that our projected year end for balance, ending fund balance is 14 million. And, and our expenditures are at 18.5 million. We have our emergency reserve and contingency reserve at both at 15%. So that's at 2.7 million. So our total reserve requirement is 5.5 million. And then we have American Rescue Plan Reserve of 1.7 million. So this number, the unallocated projecting that 22, 23 is 6.7 million. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I've got a couple of questions relating to the PAC. So we've talked about several times the master fee schedule because, you know, of course, we've added a bunch of overhead with this building and the extra maintenance, et cetera. What's the completion date for the master fee schedule? Is that going to be mid-year or what? Because
It's, I should bring in some reasonable funds.
Correct. It will. It's, it's out to the, the RFP is out to bid and they're due this Friday. And once we get that, we anticipate to present that our March council meeting for award and then we will go forward with that.
The goal is to be able to adopt the fee resolution with the changes in fees in June or July, so that it has a direct impact on the revenue for 23, 24.
Okay, so when we will adjust the budget at that time.
Correct.
That's not reflected.
No.
Right. Secondly, you know, as you know, last year we contributed $5 million to our pension liability. Can you tell me how much benefit we got from that?
Yes, we, we saved about, initially when we did the presentation back in April, we estimated we'd probably have a savings about 1.6 million in doing that and paying the public safety component for the UAL. We've saved approximately over the next five years, we'll save about 2.6 million. The UAL is supposed to be about 1.2 million for public safety, but we did the five million so that reduced our UAL for the 22, 23 year to 815,000. So we saved about
The change in discount rate.
With the discount rate, the, they're still savings because of the 21 fiscal year 2021 investment returns of 21.3% are, were configured into these, the June 30th, 2001 CalPERS actuary reports. So that coupled with our five million ADP that we contributed showed, we had, we're showing the net savings. Last fiscal year, 20, ending 22, it was a negative 6%. So those will be reflected in the following actuary reports will be reflected in the 24, 25 fiscal year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. There's a table on page eight that shows those numbers as well. Yeah. And then, you know, I just wanted to, to say here, you know, at this meeting, study session, this is like a business section as far as I'm concerned. If you have something to say, just go ahead and say it. You don't need to put your hand up. You don't need to ask permission or anything like that. I just, you know, want to make this very informal. Okay. So thank you.
The American Rescue Plan Reserve, is that anticipated receipts?
We've already received those funds. They're, they're, we put them aside in a reserve and Robert's going to bring back a detailed recommendation of where we allocate those funds to, and then they'll be shown as a revenue back into the general fund.
But what is that reserve?
1.7 million.
No, I can see the number, but what, what's, what's it mean?
It's the money we receive from the state for COVID.
That's money we've received.
Yes.
That we haven't yet spent or we haven't yet allocated.
Correct, correct.
So, so going forward, in the next slide, the general fund major revenue sources, we have three categories. The property tax make up 72% of our general fund revenue. Building fees, that's our community development fees that make up 9% of our general fund revenue and E-RAP as the below the line in our budget that we've had since fiscal year 2013, 14. It's about 9% makes up the revenue for, as a major revenue source in this forecast. So within the staff report, staff listed the, within the five year forecast, the projections of the, of our property tax revenues, building fees and excess E-RAP through fiscal year 23, 24 through 27, 28. So the anticipated projection in the property tax is 4.5% to 5.5%. So in fiscal year 23, 24, the forecasted property tax revenue is at 5.5%. And in out years, within the second year, it's 4.5% and the out years it's at 4%. Building fees are projected at 3% in the first three years and two year, in the 2% in the last two years in the forecast. E-RAP, as we had discussions over past several years in understanding E-RAP, we committed to budget at 2.3 million in this forecast going forward. Because our revenue that we receive from E-RAP is about the 2.3 range in the last two fiscal years. So you can see our total revenues projecting at 20, and our major revenues are 20 million to the, in year five forecast, in the year, in the fifth year, it's 22.9 million.
Robert?
I guess a quick question about E-RAP for 2022, 23. What had we budgeted, estimated? Because this 2.3 seems quite a bit higher than what we had been.
We did budget 2.3.
For last year.
Correct. Yeah, correct. And, and we came in about, it was about 2.3 million that we had budgeted. And 2.3 is what we received. So we, we feel confident that the last couple, two fiscal years, it's been high.
There's what we feel will be realized.
Correct. As long, we're still monitoring what the state does every year. There's always discussion about the E-RAP component in, and yeah, correct. So last two years, this, last year we received 2.3 million. Previous year was about 2.4 and then the previous year before that was 1.8 million. So it's been increasing, but during that span and during fiscal year 2021, there was the discussion of the excess E-RAP counties in the state of the state adjusting that, the calculation in the guidelines. Since then, those guidelines have been implemented with the counties that are have excess E-RAP counties. And so since then, the last two fiscal years, we've been seeing high E-RAP and in previous budget discussions, we budgeted E-RAP about 1.3, 1.1 million. Conservatively and knowing that it's what it is the last two years, we feel comfortable at 2.3 million. And again, we'll, we'll keep revisiting it as we see the E-RAP that materializes every fiscal year.
Robert, talk briefly for a second about HDL's property tax projections.
HDL in the staff report, each year presents to us every November on our property tax revenue and they project about between 4, 4.5% to 5, 5.5% in, in property tax increases here. And some of that is obviously the CPI of 2%, 2%. But the rest of that is the growth and some of that growth is through property purchases and, and construction of new properties here in Atherton. So they, they say that we should be fine as far as the growth, but again, we don't have excess development. It's just properties that we have here. So a lot of it's through the raising and, and construction and
Isn't the CPI more than 2%?
That's the max that the CPI every year, so that, that can go up. Other than that, it's through the growth of property sales.
Right. Prop 13 prevents you property from going up beyond the 2%.
Correct.
But how does the HDL recommendation relate to what you proposed in the budget in the current and in the out years?
Well, the recommendation is, is at least the 2%, but the, the recommendation is they see the median prices coming kind of down, but they, they recommend that at least the 4% to the 5% is, is, is a comfortable assumption. But again, they think that this can't continue forever, but just Atherton, just in the medium pricing going up in the last couple of years that it's
Have they ever over projected? What was our property tax percentage increase this year compared to the last fiscal year?
Eight and a half percent.
Eight and a half, correct. But they, they're, they're confident though that that is because of the market and what's going on. They can't predict who's going to sell, when they're going to sell, who's going to buy a house and construct a new house. And the timing that it takes too. Again, the, their sentiment is some of these projects take multiple years. So while they're in construction, they're at whatever that property was sold. But when it gets reassessed, it's, you know, it could be three years from now or four years.
We are realizing the growth from last year and the year before. So eventually it's gonna
It's gonna, it'll plateau.
Correct. But to, to Rick's point, they're, they're conservative. And then finance is just as conservative, if not more. So projecting into the out years, we can take it up if that's where the council would like to go, but conservatively it's 4 to 5%.
Correct.
And, and where do the penalty fees go?
The penalty, the, the county collects those.
No, no, the general fund.
Oh, are you talking about property tax?
Are they included in major revenue or are they included in other?
They're included in other.
And, and where do, where are they included in other? You'll get to that next. So why don't you just?
Yeah, yeah, correct. But, but George is correct. The, eventually it'll plateau. We're catching up to previous construction. And again, it's the timeline of when these construction projects are completed, that, that when they, they're realized into the property tax rolls for us.
No, it's public meeting.
Okay, sorry. Yes. Hi, how are you? Nice to see you. This is a study session about our budget. Okay, you let me know how it works.
Okay. So, Robert, maybe I'm jumping ahead a little bit, but on capital projects and, and then in other items that were in the report, you talked about the increase in maintenance costs and things like that. Are we making sure that all the costs that are associated with the library are being funneled into the library? Because when I was at their latest board meeting, because Rick was out of town, you know, they claimed they had $75 million in, in surplus and they were asking people to come up with ways to spend it. So I'd like to make sure we get our piece of the action if in fact there's something that we're supposed to, they're supposed to be paying for. We shouldn't be paying for that. So like our maintenance guy, they should be paying for part of him, things like that. So.
No, no, correct. So our landscaping, our maintenance, those get, do you get charged out to the library for, for the cost and then those come out of the town's portion of its
So they're reflected in the expenditures.
Yeah, yeah. And they're into the library. Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, the, the revenue, this is just mainly the general fund revenue, but the library has its own revenue source and its own expenditures that, that we do account for, that we manage the consultants that, that do the maintenance at the library and we do charge those out.
So while we're just on that topic, how how much can we accrue of that excess revenue from the library before we lose it? I mean, do we get to, or do we have to create new programs in order to spend that excess money in a timely fashion?
On those programs, we, we spend it, I mean, we get the, there's the new allocation split, the cost between the, the JPA and the, and the town. But the difference, whatever our operation is for the library, that will come from our split of the funds. So
It's not revenue. The, the no, no, that's library property taxes, just reducing our expenses to the extent that we get money from the library fund, which we have a right to do, which is what Bill brought up and isn't, is an important question. But it's not part of our revenue. It's only part of our expense.
I'm just referring to, it used to be that excess funds that were not used by our library on an annual basis went into a separate account as excess donor funds, which we then accrued over a number of years to help pay for the new building.
And, and we still have, we still have that account, but it's not revenue.
Okay.
In no cases a revenue. It just accumulates in the library.
Was referring to a $75 million surplus.
Well, that's a different issue. That's, that's a $75 million surplus in the Santa Clara County Library Fund. That's, that's a seventy five million dollar surplus in the Santa Clara County Library Fund.
San Mateo County J P A, not Santa Clara.
San, Santa is S M C L is what it's called, Santa Clara County Library J P A, that's right, it's a J P A.
San Mateo.
San Mateo.
San Mateo, San Mateo, S M C O.
Right, right, okay. But I know that we had that discussion earlier on about how are we going to spend this excess revenue? Because our property taxes are such that so much of it goes to the J P A. Okay, and we can't spend it.
True. And that's still true, but, but that, that accumulation isn't revenue for Atherton in any cases, just goes into the.
It's not library revenue, it's library.
It's not library revenue, it accumulates in a trust fund that's, that's held by Atherton, which right now is negative because we borrowed
Ahead.
An amount of money ahead.
Yes, okay. So right, okay. So that seventy five million dollars doesn't have any. Okay, absolutely. I would like that, okay, thank you.
We are going to ensure that whatever costs the town incurred generally with respect to the town center are properly allocated to the library fund and we get reimbursed for those costs each year.
Is Mademoiselle Colette's cost, uh, associated with the library?
Uh, no, it's at least with the town.
Okay, I just wanted to see if we could funnel some more money. Okay, I know it's going to end up being revenue, but I, I thought the cost of preparing the facility might part of the seventy five million. Okay, all right, thank you.
No, no, you, you're fine, you're fine. So, um, going on to the next, the, the other revenues, other, we just discussed our major revenues, our general fund, other revenue sources. You can see in the slider, sales use tax, sales tax, franchise fees, business license, planning, public works, park and other. Uh, it, it, these are projections, uh, for the next five years and, and most of these are to one to two percent. Planning is at three percent within this, um, uh, five year forecast and what, um, council member De Guo was referencing, the other is the, what we consider the, um, forfeitures are in there. It's not the entire one million, but that, that component of the, um, forfeiture revenue is in here. Correct.
I think that number, I, I think the conservative projection of one to two percent for everything and three percent for planning makes sense except for other. Because other in twenty three, twenty four is the first year that those new building projects that are exceeding their time limit are no longer subject to the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap, I believe. And I think we're going to see that number expand substantially because they've been capped at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for those projects that went over the three year time limit or the two year time limit, depending on the size of the project. And given that that cap, I think for pretty much everything is now, uh, finished. Uh, I think everything that's come through us, except maybe one, but I think everything that came through us was capped. Uh, but we're going to start to see properties paying the penalties that are uncapped. And that's going to increase at much more than one to two percent, at least in the first year or two.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree with that, but the question would be, where are we on the, um, appeals from those people? Uh, are they getting cleared out and or, or are they all cleared out now and the money that comes through was essentially from the last couple of years, is that?
So the, your, your monthly report includes that summary in the building table. And the chart at the very top is what they've been penalized.
Right.
The table at the bottom is what's actually been collected. And the difference between the two is whether they've got an appeal pending. So we hold that money in trust until they go through that process. The, the bulk of the ones, as Rick indicated, that are from prior years are matriculated through that process and the new ones that are coming are on the unlimited side of things. So as they finish, they do have appeal rights to the planning commission and then that could come to the city council as well. So if you haven't seen one, it hasn't made it through that process.
But most of the appeals, if I recall, were due to COVID and things like that, and that's kind of over right now, so.
Well, there, there are still supply chain issues out there, uh, and so some of the other issues that have been raised is, you know, weather or, or material delays or specialty material delays. But all of those things are.
Who the architect was.
Who the architect was, are all adjudicated through the planning commission process. And then they can ultimately be appealed to the, to the city council.
All right. Thanks.
But, but I, I think that number is hundreds of thousands of dollars off on the last line.
Well, cor- correct, well, this, of the other, it, it includes, um, place school revenue, other miscellaneous revenue interest. So in the five year forecast, the, the, um, forfeiture currently is at two hundred and fifty thousand in the forecast going forward, because, correct. And, and so currently this year.
For each of the years is two hundred and fifty?
It's two hundred and fifty, correct. So some of this, this revenue is, is at one percent, two percent for that. Yes, it can be adjusted, but it's not, doesn't make up the major component of that one million.
What was the amount of forfeiture this year?
Six hundred and fifty five thousand, but we, it, it, we can't guarantee.
Thousand dollars off.
I mean, it could, but I, I can't, I mean, I can give it the building department and say, okay, tell me of all these houses, how many are we going to get? I mean, I, I.
So, uh, again, the out years are a projection.
Correct.
We don't know who's going to fail and who's not.
Correct.
Or what the issues are going to be or whether their appeal is going to be successful. So we can put a higher number in there, but at the end of the day, it's really just.
We'll hold up, but for this past fiscal year, we've had six hundred and fifty thousand dollars of forfeitures. These forecasts include two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. There's no reason to expect that the forfeiture number is going to go down because the cap's gone away. It's only going to go up. Uh, I, I. Well, until, until building slows down
Yeah.
To less than twenty five new houses a year, we're going to have an average of, we, we know that houses are taking a long time to build.
They, they are. What I, what I think might help inform that sort of analysis though, is to have Robert go back and and show us what we've received every year from these C T L penalties. And how many of them have actually hit that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar cap? That's what we receive. So if we get that detail, then, then that argument might make sense.
That would be helpful. My guess is that those numbers are going to go up between five hundred thousand to a million dollars a year.
I, I think it might be more appropriate to put in five hundred thousand a year because the houses are bigger. That's the thing.
I, I think having built into the, do the analysis makes sense.
The larger houses are going to take longer than three years to get completed.
Yeah.
And.
And they're going to go off the penalty.
We'll get in there.
They're going to go, they're going to go off what had been capped.
Yeah. So.
What do you think?
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, uh, I do know that Mademoiselle Colette's here for a public comment. I don't know that we can take it as a business item, we, in fact, I don't think we can. It's not on the agenda, but you might want to hear her out and then direct staff to work with with her for her solution, whatever that might be. I don't know what the issue is, but rather than wait until the end of the.
You're suggesting we hear from her now.
Yes.
Okay. We can hear your public comment.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much, and I'm very lucky because, uh, everything happened between yesterday and today, if I was able to come here and see you.
Two things, one, speak into the mic and two, we won't be able to solve the issue tonight or discuss it, but I'll be able to hear it, okay?
I just played my calls. Like you know, I've been waiting for a long time to found a contractor and the permits and everything. Uh, and during all this time, I continued the project, I buy a lot of equipment, I'm ready to go. And, uh, I have a problem. Uh, first, I only have a one person, I contact, I don't know, more than twenty different contractors. Some come from your advisors, other I contact people that I used to work before. Nobody was or available or interested in doing so small project. And I found the one person that agreed to do the project. Okay, we agree a certain price, everything was fine. And yesterday I meet him and say, look, we have the permit, we're good to go. And, uh, he gave me another, another quote that it's completely ridiculous, that make no sense for a space like this. Look, I would like to you to maybe think about a way that we can maybe do things differently and not have a real cafe where people can go in, but maybe just place the order in the window like this. I don't need to do so much remodeling, but today, and I, I, it's make no sense because you'd be ten years for me to, to, uh, to have this money recover. And especially I buy all the equipment already. Look, I don't know, I just would like to you to think about and see if you have other options. Then instead of, instead of have the clients go in, look at all the products, place the order and then have to wait outside to have this, just, uh, the people placing the order in the window. And we give, of course, the, the items to them, but don't have people come inside because if I don't need, I don't have people inside, I don't need to put the most beautiful furniture and equipment and everything that we need to build inside. Okay, I just would like to, to you to think about and help me to found a, a plan B. Because the, the way that is today is just, it's no, it's make no sense. Okay, and I'm, I'm willing to start the project, I have everything ready to go. We buy the ice cream machine because you have the plans to have the, but the, the project itself, it's become not real, uh, realistic. Okay? Thank you so much. And let me know how it works, I don't know how we, so maybe Robert, it will be. Okay. Thank you so, so much.
Thank you for coming.
Bye, everyone.
Bye.
Bye.
Perhaps, uh, a member of the council could, from that former subcommittee could assist in providing some input to staff and work with Mademoiselle Colette in some way.
Yeah, oh. Yeah, I will have. Yeah, okay, I'll have Elizabeth myself, uh, handle that. Okay, great, I'll sit in for Bob. I probably won't be as good, but I'll do my best.
Okay, I'll reach out to Robert too, he's got the details.
All right, no problem, thank you. Okay, Robert, would you like to continue?
Yeah, sure. Yes, sure. Uh, so just given, going through the general fund major expenditures, just showing you percentage of budget this year. It shows you our operations, um, our different departments and what, what they represent in our budget for expenditures. So, um, as you can see, the biggest departments are, are police and public works. So police is about fifty two point six percent of our expenditure budget and public works is sixteen point seven percent. Major components of our operational expenses, uh, within the five year is, uh, labor costs. We forecasted labor costs, um, at four percent and three percent, so four percent in the first three years and three percent out in the last two years in the forecast. Pension costs, um, the twenty three, twenty four local miscellaneous pension costs are increasing from eleven point zero six percent to twelve point six three percent, um, in the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year. This is the, um, our employer contribution cost, um, um, payroll. Local safety is, uh, for twenty three, twenty fours, increasing, um, about, uh, three percent from twenty six, twenty five point six percent to twenty nine point nine percent, point zero nine percent for the upcoming fiscal year. And again, some of these amounts, the actual amount is one percent less for miscellaneous component and three percent less for public safety. Um, a couple of years ago, the town entered an agreement that the employee would pick up the max amount of the employer cost. So it's one percent for miscellaneous employees and three percent for public safety employees, so.
This is the ongoing cost? Not the.
This is not the U A L.
Okay.
This is the, the current, th- this is what we know for the twenty three, twenty four fiscal year.
Got it, thank you. Just wanted to verify.
And there'll be less those amounts, um, because of the, uh, cost sharing with, with the employees. Uh, operational expenses are forecasted between four point five and three percent in the forecast. It's four point five in the first three years and three percent in the out years uh, for operational expenditures. Calpers U A L for the upcoming fiscal year, twenty three, twenty four, it's four hundred and forty six thousand U A L. For the miscellaneous employees in public safety is eight hundred and seventeen thousand. Within your staff report on page eight, it lists the, um, current, the forecasted U A L component um, for public safety and miscellaneous. But if you look at the, um, it, it, the staff report, uh, I provided a difference in savings, so, um, the twenty three, twenty four was, was estimated to, before we made the A D P payment was it'll be about one point two, two, one point two, three, five million? And for this upcoming year is eight hundred and seventeen thousand. So that's where we see the effect of what the A D P payment did. So we saved four hundred and eighteen thousand this upcoming fiscal year for, um, twenty three, twenty four for our public safety U A L component. Um, and that's where, going back to the beginning of the presentation, we're estimated one point six million in savings because in the public safety U A L. Now with the updated Calpers actuarial, the savings is about two point six million in the next five years, um, just on the A D P component. But again, a big component also is the twenty one point three percent, um, interest, uh, the discount uh, that, that the investment made in the fiscal year twenty twenty one.
The current year though is what?
It's, the last year was negative six, six percent. So that'll get factored into the, uh, actuary reports at the end of this fiscal year, which will take effect in twenty four, twenty five fiscal year for us. So there's a two year delay. And in this current year, we're reaping the benefit of the, uh, twenty twenty one, um, investment returns, twenty one percent.
And in terms of the allocation uh, for the operations, the previous slide to this.
Mm-hmm.
How, ha- have any of these percentages materially changed from the last year or two?
Uh, not, not as, not materially, I think maybe P D was probably fifty one point five, I believe in the previous year. And it's gone up about a percentage, um, in, in, in public works, but in, in relation, most of them have been around the same.
Okay.
And, and police would be the only place where there would be a dramatic change.
Correct.
That's, the, the police department would be the only one where there'd be a dramatic change, if anything. Because building and planning are all, um, contract staff, we don't have pension costs on them, so the U A L wouldn't affect that.
And is part of the police operations budget include an allocation from the building?
Uh, you mean overhead costs?
Yeah.
Yes.
And included in the operations budget.
Yes.
So that would have been an increase from the previous building, obviously.
Correct. Yes, you like utilities, uh, uh, the, uh, their majority, like utilities, P G N E water. Um, P D is a big, gets a big component of that.
They are fifty percent of the building's allocations cost.
Correct.
And then the other twenty twenty.
Twenty, twenty percent is.
Is split between the other two and then the library is another portion.
Correct.
So Mayor, I have a question for Robert. Uh, just going back to the Calpers U A L contribution, um, so that, that your chart on page eight, if I understand this correctly, that we, um, made a five million dollar contribution to reduce, uh, the, um, the, uh, annual, um, payments and our differences, the bottom line. So if we add those five numbers together over the next five years, that's what, about two, two point five million or?
Yes, ma'am.
Something like, so we invested five million to save two point five?
We did, but we have to understand that it's not just the five million that we contributed. It's just the, the investment return was twenty one percent in that fiscal year. So it also is calculated in this, when we made this A D B payment.
Compounded some way.
Correct. And it within the actuary.
Okay.
Because this prior, the, the initial, um, when we were presenting in April, the amounts were, um, presented to us at that time, what, what it was for, they were higher, correct. When this actuary report came out, they were lower because it took into effect the twenty one percent in, investment return and the A D P that we had, we had contributed. So those two factors, before it was just, at that time, what we were contributing.
Uh-huh.
What before, you know, what the rate, the projections were for the first five years, before that twenty one per- percent was, and the five million that we contributed.
Was still a good deal, right?
Yeah. It was. Yeah, it was a good deal because initially it was one point six million savings. And now it's two point six million after the actuary report came out and they forecasted our next five years of the U A L payment. So, yeah.
My mind still goes, we put five million dollars in, and over five years, we save two point six.
Mm-hmm.
So.
How much did we lose, so the five million? How much did we lose, sort of, the five million? Because the market went significantly down.
We'll, we'll, we'll figure that out, we'll find that out in this next, um, reports that, that as of this fiscal year. Um, which will be ending six thirty, twenty-two, because that's when the. Um, investment return of negative six percent was, was in the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year.
Yeah.
So we'll get those reports come August and that will take into effect what that, that does.
Was just unfortunate.
Yeah, the timing, it was the timing, and who knows, I mean, our U A Ls could, it, instead of the two point six, but now it could maybe it could be two million savings instead. Or one point nine, it could, or it could go back to what it was, one point six million. You know, yes.
Okay, all right, fine, thank you.
So the, uh, the next thing was with, uh, our major components of operational, um, costs. Uh, building contract, I T services, M C, M C E, our contract custodial services, landscape, landscape servicing, now we have a. Dedicated landscape servicing contract, planning services and legal services, so some of these. Um, will have some increased costs as we enter the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year budget. Um, with housing element, um, that we're reviewing, uh, with planning and, and also just understanding of our maintenance services with. With all our different consultants.
So, uh, Mona, are we anticipating any additional costs on the legal services that have been budgeted?
I think just trying to finalize the housing element, there's going to be costs beyond, um, normal planning and legal review. Um, we are also in the process of, um, filing an abatement warrant for a pro- for a property. That was previously, um, before the council, um, abate a nuisance. So those are some examples of anomalies that you haven't seen, um, in years past that will, um. That will have a, an increase in overall legal expenditures, um, and then hopefully it'll level back down. But I do anticipate that there will be increases this year.
Okay, so as soon as you can estimate those and get those to Robert, that'd be good, thank you. I realize you can't make, you know, give us a firm number, but you could make an estimate and then we'll just get that. And make sure we have something close to ac- as accurate as possible in our budget.
Mm-hmm, and we do, we do that, as we go through the budget process, we, we look at all these.
I know, I know, I'm just trying to think ahead.
Thank you. I'm just going back to U A L, just letting you know, just showing what's in the staff report, one point two-six million this year. Projecting in year five, one million, six hundred, uh, one million, six hun-. One million, six hundred, six thirty, uh, in, in payments. Uh, and, uh, the U A L for this year, you can see four hundred fifty-two and eight hundred fifteen in the current year coming forward. Reserve balances, again, we've discussed that our reserve balances are fifteen percent for emergency and fifteen percent for operating. This used to be twenty percent, um, last fiscal year, and we changed that, um, going forward. Unallocated balance, it's any balances that have not been committed and represents that fund, uh, not as, unassigned. Uh, so those, those funds are where we use to allocate to our C I P project in previous years. Again, this is just the summary of the forecast with the, what was in the staff report. U R F is a major revenue, doesn't represent a, uh, actual budget expectations year over year. Um, they were different as we go, the, the requirements will change as we go through the budget process. But the, in this report, this page, the net fund balance and that, after you, uh, factor in the revenues and expenditures. Uh, you can see where I start off at four point nine million in twenty-three, twenty-four for an, uh, net to fund balance. To a six point eight million in years twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Just want to point out in year twenty-six, twenty-seven, there's that call option component, um, that if we wanted to on the debt service for the. Um, C O P, that's in there, so that just shows that our net fund balance from that fiscal year is nine hundred and twenty-one thousand.
Just to. That is an exercise of an early payout.
Early call option on the C O P, the five year.
That's an early payout of the two percent loan?
Yes, correct.
When inflation certainly exceeds that.
Correct, I mean, we, we, uh, the council put that option in there if we decided to, to exercise it, and, and. It's an option.
Yeah, it's an option, but when we went and did the five million, I think we voted to forego that option.
Correct, yeah, and it's just.
It's still there.
Yeah, and the forecast is just showing if we decided, this could be C I P in, in, um, projects. Again, this is just a forecast, um, going forward, I mean, we could decide that we, we allocate money in this current budget as we start the budget process. Uh, and then another allocation to the C I P.
So one of the things that I brought up before on, on these charts specifically. If you would show the current year, so we would be able to evaluate the, the change. That would be great, I realize we can go to the detailed spreadsheets you have in the back of your staff report.
Yep.
Uh, that started in two thousand seventeen and move forward, but it'd be good to have them in these charts here since that's what many people just see, okay?
Will do.
Thanks.
So this is just the last side, slide, the fund balance projection, so you can see the remaining un- unallocated balance, um, going forward. We're at projecting thirteen point five million, um, in the first year and by twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Um, un- unallocated fund balance of thirty-one point two million. These did not include C I P.
The number of C I P, right, Robert, and this also, just to be clear, I think in fiscal year twenty-six, twenty-seven includes exercising that call option.
Yes, it did, it includes exercising that call option in this, in this, uh.
Okay.
But in the, in the forecast that can change, we could, you know, allocate to A D P payment again or. But a- as, as for the exercise, that, that year five is when we can exercise it.
At the end of this fiscal year.
Sorry, it's, it's because there's people, I, I, I apologize.
What, what's the, what's the balance going to be in the C I P fund, money that we've allocated and expense that hasn't been spent yet?
In the C I P fund? It, there's about a million in there, but, uh, that right now is earmarked for the part project right now. And the C I P fund, the, the four oh one, correct. So this just shows the, again, I just want to, this does not include, uh, allocations to capital projects, that these remaining unallocated fund balances. Um, that's, it, it is a, a rolling balance, um, from year, from each year within, within the forecast. So as we allocate, uh, funding of the fund, general fund balance, unallocated funding balance, this will change. Um, but in the five-year forecast, as you see in your spreadsheet, uh, this includes any, um, transfers out. As of currently right now, and at the end of five years from now, we project thirty-one million of unallocated fund balance. And then just, this is just the calendar, operations budget, April fifth study session. The C I P budget will be reviewed at May third and budget study session, June seventh, we'll bring all our. Uh, study session, all our different revenues, uh, funds back together to review. And then with the hopeful adoption of June twenty-first of our twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
And these will all be, uh, with the exception of the budget adoption, when on June twenty-first, they'll all be noticed as joint meetings of the council and finance committee.
So back on the past chart. How are we getting to thirty-one million dollars?
More revenue than expense.
Well, I understand that, but there's, does that include that we're paying off the C O P?
Yes, and it does.
And, and what's not shown is what Bob asked for the current year is six point seven, seven, five. So twenty-two, twenty-three, the projected based on the revised budget. Is that we would have six point seven, seven, five of the available fund balance. And then that's going up.
Yeah, at the end of this fiscal year, twenty-three, twenty-four, the unallocated balance, balance is six point seven million. The total fund balance is about four, fourteen million that we projected in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. But going through the forecast, we, revenues over expenditures, our transfers out. The un- okay, unallocated balance does grow to, from thirteen point five million to thirty-one million. Um, if you look at, this is just, also, this is the high level from your forecasting spreadsheet. So this is just showing you the summaries of all of that.
So question, does, does this fund balance projection include. A transfer out of funds for ru- for facility replacement?
Currently, it does not.
Well, you know.
Okay, so I would just say to the council, notice, we, to this year, we are at six point seven, seven, five. Next year, we're accumulating almost six million dollars based on these projections. And those accumulations go up another eighteen million dollars over the ensuing four years. So there's a lot of money that we're accumulating and one thing we need to do as we run through the budget cycle this year. And each of the next few years is decide how we want to spend some of that money, because we're not a bank. And, and in my opinion, we shouldn't be accumulating unnecessary money and we need to be thoughtful about how to spend it. But one example of how we, I think we could responsibly allocate some of the funds. Is to a facilities replacement reserve, which doesn't do anything other than increase and create a new reserve. But it takes money out of the unallocated funds balance, which I think is responsible. Because we know how much it costs us to build this facility and we should be accumulating something for the future. But there are other projects that we obviously should think about because we're growing from six point seven to thirty-one million. And paying off five million dollars or more C O P in the process. So we're really accumulating almost thirty million dollars in the next five years if we don't. Change our spending habits.
But we did a five-year forecast and we said how we would allocate it and there was money allocated to. You, maintenance and, and equipment, and, and.
And we transferred out four point five million this year as part of that process.
We need to keep looking at that because that's what we jointly came up with. Now, if we want to make a change to that, then that's great, but, but we had looked at how we were going to spend that money looking forward. Things change every year, I understand that, but we did have money in the equipment. You know, the capital replacement fund for this building here and as well as additional maintenance.
That, that, that's a fixed five hundred thousand dollar amount.
Well, well, we should look at it again.
I don't think it, I don't think we have established an increase in that.
Well, no.
The, the five-year plan said it and then.
Yeah, well, we should look at it because i- is, you know, there was money that, you know, George said, hey, I really don't want you guys to touch this. And there was other money that we had allocated out, so we should look at that spreadsheet again. Move some things around and see what we want to do, but knowing where we are today versus where we were six months ago.
Correct, well, and we're just coming off of the town center project, right? Biggest project, i- i- expenditure wise for general fund, but there's capital improvement projects, we have a bunch of master plans that were part of that bucket list. They contributing to the Calpers U A L, that was in there, we did that. Again, those can be things that we continue to look at, we don't know how that would change going forward.
All right, I'll discuss something.
No, I just want to support, uh, what you are, are saying about, um, replacement fund. And I thought that we had made a policy decision, um, to create such a fund. Uh, once we kind of got through the building of this project. Because when we were coming up on trying to find money to build a new town center. After a hundred years, uh, you know, we didn't have any. And if we had, uh, had a replacement fund already established, so, um, what percentage is that going to be? And how much, five hundred thousand dollars a year is just not going to make it.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, my opinion, just off the top of my head, is we should be putting at least a million dollars a year aside. Into a facilities replacement fund.
Okay, or a percentage, because some years may be leaner than others.
But we, 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 we have facilities, not just here. I mean, it's wise to put money aside to rebuild this in seventy-five years or whatever. But we're going to have to rebuild facilities in the park way sooner than that.
Yes, yes.
But, but, you know, as I, as I said several times, I think that, you know, we've had to. Scrape and sacrifice for building this building. And so I don't think that we need to hand somebody in fifty years, here's all the money to replace this building. Uh, you know, they, they should make some sacrifices too, so we don't need to, we don't need to make. All, you know, for, you know, cover all the sins of past as well as future councils, okay? So we, we, we should do it, uh, temper it a little bit, uh, which I, is that same thing I've said all along.
I want to make it easy for them, huh?
Yeah.
I would say we didn't have to scrape as deep as we scraped because we have seven million dollars in excess.
We got lucky.
Thankfully, we had the C O P.
We got lucky with the, the interest rates and, and that we, that we had a council makeup that was bold enough. To go into debt, um, because.
Yeah, I agree.
You know what I'm saying, I don't want to dig it up.
Yeah, we'll bring that spreadsheet back as part of the budget process and we can make those policy decisions.
Correct, and, and just to echo the sentiment about, we did create a, a facility replacement fund. And this was back in the twenty-twenty or twenty-one, twenty-two budget year, we created the fund, the council created the fund. Correct, but we haven't put any money in it, so we've already done that part, it's just, now it's just kind of understanding what.
But, but I think this is a fun thing for us to address, I mean, we're sitting here looking at a very significant growing, unbalanced. Unallocated reserve that are not reserve, but balance in excess of reserves that, um. I, I, and, and I, Bill's right, we, we've decided what to allocate into our, uh, you know, capital projects in the past. But in the past, we were building this and now we're past building this and we're looking beyond it. And I think we should be aggressive in terms of what we look at, we should look at how we can improve the quality of life for Atherton residents. I, a couple of things like that, that I think, I mean, maybe they'll come to pass in some of the fund grants that we've applied for. But I think we've got to do something with Alameda and Stockbridge, and I think we've got to do something at Selby Lane and El Camino Real.
How about Marsh Road and the channel, you know, creating a bike and walking back?
There's a series of things that I think we can look at that, that if we make the right judgments around. As I believe we did with this town center, we will include, improve the quality of life for our residents.
I agree, thirty-one million is a lot of money.
Yeah, so it's way more than we've ever had.
More than I ever thought that we would have.
Way more than I've ever had.
Hopefully, it's more than we will have. Because we'll figure out how to spend it.
Yeah, right.
All right, all right.
But we don't want to turn off the spigot.
Yeah, so Robert, you want to finish up?
Well, just, you know, it's great that we're thinking about all these different opportunities that we have. Um, you know, doing this forecast too, you know, we, we, just with E R A, we did several years ago, we treated it below the line. Not counted as a revenue, thinking that one day it's going to go away, it could happen five, ten years from now. And that's why we earmark it as one-time funds, so continuing to review this and look at opportunities that we have. Um, our master plans, we have forty-five million drainage master plan, uh, you know, bike master plans and all this, so. Yeah, thirty-one million, but we have a bunch of buckets in that spreadsheet showed, you know, what we could do with it. But, um, we have made headway in some of those things, so yeah, I don't want to get Robert too riled because it's just more projects, right?
Plus, we got six million, sixteen million dollars in debt for the Purse still.
Correct.
Paying five million dollars back.
Correct, and we'll keep reviewing that.
Eighteen million to pay.
Correct, so, I mean, we say it's thirty-one million, but there's, there's all these different buckets.
Just make sure we drive it down every year we can. And, and, uh, we want to make sure, well, right now is the time probably to invest, actually, this, this year and next year.
Yeah, and that's all I have, um.
Great.
Uh, I'll try to make this quick, um, but it was good discussion and dialogue, dialogue.
Okay, so are there any public comments on this? Anne, are you on still, do you want to make a comment? Is there any public comments online when you get a chance?
Here, I'll do it.
Anne had to leave at five, but, uh, Tom Hill is on, he's on the committee as well.
Tom, you have any comments? Tom, you have any comments? Nope, I take that as a no. Okay. Nobody has their hand up. Yep, okay. Well, then we'll move on. Tom, were you gonna say something?
Uh, uh, yes, uh, in in terms of. Uh, all the things that you can think of to do with the growing balance, uh, we shouldn't forget about. Paydowns of the U A L. And there's a high return to that stuff. And uh eventually, that's if we don't, there is going to be a huge burden on the town.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, Tom. Good point. Okay, let's move on to item number two. Discussion of the amendments of the town noise ordinance. Related to the use of gas powered leaf blowers. We've talked about this several times as George's staff report is put together. And indicated, you know, we've had this on, we we postponed it or actually said we're not going to do anything just now and then it's come back and. And we had a subcommittee and we did a survey with fifty percent of the people saying no and fifty percent of the people saying yes. So we are where we are. Um, so who's gonna present this? George, go ahead.
That concludes the staff report.
Well, wait, we had a subcommittee.
We did. Uh, the mayor and the vice mayor is actually the leaf blower subcommittee. And they had different perspectives on the issue, but did come up with a couple of suggestions at the end of that. Banning the use of gas powered leaf blowers by commercial vendors, but allowing the use to continue by. Residents and property owners when they are personally operating the equipment to maintain or improve their own property. Uh, and then consider making it unlawful to operate a leaf blower, any leaf blower, gas or electric. On a spare the air day when it's so declared by the Bay Area Air Quality Management District. Uh, so those were uh suggestions by individual members of the subcommittee. The subcommittee itself can report out, uh, but staff's looking for some direction on next steps for this particular issue.
Well, um, so I I'll I'll start and I know that Ken's here and. He's uh planning on hosting an educational. Me- yeah, meeting and demonstration on not only gas blowers uh or electric blowers, but also electric. Uh, trimmers and lawn cutters and things like that, so. My thoughts are and and have been all along. Um, the commercial people, the commercial vendors. And we don't know all of them, but we do know some of them. Um, they have at their, they have, they can avail themselves of of rebates. And and reimbursements from the state. There's like two point three million dollars or something like that. That the state is allocated to pay commercial landscapers to convert. However, that number and that money is not available to individual residents. How many individual residents actually do their own lawn, blowing it out and things like that? I'd have to say probably in the whole town, maybe a hundred and fifty, okay? Other people may have a gas blower and uh use it when they have a party. Blow off their patio or blow off their yard because, you know, the wind came up and knocked a bunch of stuff down. But they don't do it all the time. And so I don't think that they should have to go spend, you know. Money to go buy a new blower, but that's my two cents. Um, I think that Carol was brought up and we've had many, many discussions on the um. Spare the air days. I can understand. Uh, you know, my colleague here is with regards to people with air. Uh, issues and and breathing issues, respiratory issues. I think that's a, that's a pertinent issue. Um, but it could be handled actually with uh. You know, talking to their their gardeners too. Um, so I, but I do understand where where Diana's coming from. And yeah, if somebody who's had lung lung issues, they don't want to have the the particulate matter. Brought up. It's not a spare the air day. It's a particulate matter that gets into people's lungs and that's where. Uh, this idea had come from. Um, so anyway, that's uh, that's my two cents, Diana.
Um, sorry. Well, we all know that the state's gonna ban the sale of leaf blowers starting in January of next year. So we waited so long, it's state's catching up with us. So you're not gonna be able to buy them at all in January. If we look around at what other cities are doing. Cortola Valley has banned leaf blowers since January twenty one. Um, Palo Alto has has had them banned for quite a while, but haven't enforced the fines. So they've now stepped up and said they want to enforce the fines and um. They're pushing people to actually break, believe it or not. So they're really going way on the other side. Great to actually rate. They're saying go out and rate.
Wait, when you said they're banning, is it banning a gas powered or all leaf blowers?
Gas powered, gas powered in Palo Alto, but they are pushing. There's a big movement there to push for X. Now, mind you, they have much smaller properties than us. Um, in Menlo Park, which is our more immediate neighbor, what they're doing is they're saying in July of twenty four, so. January twenty four comes the ban on sale. You can't buy it anymore. Jan- uh, July of twenty four, you won't be able to use them. So they're giving you some a number of months for it to die. So that you can't replace it. So that's what they're doing. So they're kind of doing a little more conservative. So our neighbors around us are all over the map. Um, I I'm having a hard time with this one. And the other thing I want to say on the spare the air day. It's not just people with asthma. It's feces. It's very toxic. So after the smokes, the smoke days.
Um, wait, what about feces? I didn't.
They blow feces as well as a whole bunch of slew of really, really toxic chemicals, particularly after smoke days. Dogs, I hope. They're dogs. I don't know. Particulate matter, but a lot of it is particularly toxic. Yeah, it's particularly toxic. It's not, it's not minor. And what we're talking about are particular days for smoke days. One of the problems with using spare the air day without articulating it by a particular number of particulate matter. They do have spare their days that are not related to particulate matter. And so they have ones that are based on, what's it called?
Smoke.
No.
Hey, Q I?
No, it has to do with radiation. But anyway, so in the summer, you can have a spare the air day that's not based on particulate matter. So what we were trying to target with this issue is how do we get at when it's really toxic smoke? Because it isn't just a few people. Now, if you remember, think back of that orange day when the air was so orange. And people didn't even want to walk their dogs. You weren't even supposed to be outside. And we've, we've had air levels now in the Bay Area just starting the last few years. They're full on hazards for everybody, not just sensitive people. And the schools have been responding. We now have smoke days at schools. So this is an issue that's gonna carry with us. This is not a little issue. I tried to go to this, the the fresh air board, whatever they are with the long acronym. And they don't have an answer for this either because they said that they only measure particulate matter when it's in the air, but not when it's on the ground. So we are kind of looking for the stuff that's on the ground. So I think that this is important, how to implement. I I hear you. It's it's hard. And how to get the words out, but I have to say that when it's an orange day, you think your gardener's gonna know. So what we're really concerned about are the days that are really bad. And how we get to the point where we have a way to enforce it, maybe just having it on the books is enough. So be if people know about it, we make, we publicize it. People know about it. They'll make their own judgment. And remember, we don't enforce anything unless someone's complaining. That's the way our city works. So unless someone's saying. There's somebody blowing next door, we're not gonna send somebody out. So I I'm still, I settle back on wanting to 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 enact that as soon as we can. And adding particulate matter numbers to it. And then figure out how we actually enforce it because I think it's important to bring it up the food ladder also within. All the people that are doing fire safety and smoke safety within the state. They have to address this as well. And as far as banning in the uh the for residents versus commercial. I think that's splitting hairs. I think we either ban it or we don't ban it. And if we were to pick a more conservative date like July twenty four, which is when. Menlo Park's doing, you're already, you're, it's attrition of the machines is already started at that point. So I I would be in inclined to do um. A full ban, not separating it by the different groups and just have it be a little bit out in the future to give our residents time. And for us to educate people with events like what Ken is having. Um, I think there was some question about who gets the ticket. And I think the resident should get the ticket, not not, not the, not the employee. The re- it's the residence job to do that. Um, I'm a little bit sad that we're doing this fabulous event. In the middle of the week right now, as opposed to tying it, I would have liked to see our event. Tied with any sort of announcement of what we're doing and putting it out for everybody to do. So getting more bang for the buck as opposed to. Giving it just to a handful of it. Because right now, the only people that are gonna come to this are gardeners who happen to be interested in electric. Once you tell everyone, we're all going electric, the state's making you go electric, this is, we're all going electric. Come and learn about it. Then it becomes a bigger issue and I would like to have used the five thousand dollars we used for that. More toward educating people on what we're doing with this going forward. So that's my two cents.
So I did a lot of research on this topic. Um. Marin County has almost universally adopted gas powered leaf plan. So I went through and checked out some of the communities there to see what they did. Um, so all of them have been gas powered leaf bands. It's more of a question of how they're enforcing it. They've also. All of them universally are applying their enforcement to homeowners and not operators. They have not distinguished between homeowners or operators. And it's really just a question of, there's kind of three variables here of when it takes place as a ban. And then also, a lot of towns are initially starting with kind of a. A warning for the enforcement for six months, year, two years. Um, and then they have a scaling fine that goes to the homeowner based on how many complaints they've had. So. Um.
With the three variables are when?
When does it come into place? And then how they're enforcing it? And then also how long between the ban and when the actual financial penalties start coming? So basically, most towns, from what I can tell, are using like a six month, one year part of enforcing it without. Financially penalizing anyone as part of their education component, where you get like a big scary ticket from the town saying. In in two languages, saying this is now illegal. You've received a complaint, code enforcement's come through and you. You know, starting in January twenty twenty four, whatever, you'll start getting a financial penalty. You, not your landscaper, so, you know, please convey this to them. So some of the other towns, especially locally, are doing financial incentive programs for landscapers.
Financial incentive, you mean?
They're helping them with buyback programs. Yeah, so. Yeah, so Portola Valley did a, hold on, and this is for residents and. I think it was just for residents. It was a leaf blower trade in program in which residents could bring their gas powered leaf blowers to receive forty percent of the cost. Of an all electric blower up to a hundred and twenty dollars. So electric leaf blowers for residential use because they don't need it to work for like. Many, many hours. It's usually like three hours maximum for a resident usually. You could buy those at Home Depot for like three hundred dollars, two hundred dollars. We had a bunch of those at Earth Day last year. And they worked for the whole festival. They didn't have to charge any of them. So. Residential use is actually not that expensive. Where it gets really expensive is the commercial use. That's when you're approaching thousand dollars, two thousand dollars. And that's where the state has massive incentive programs. It's almost offsets almost seventy percent of. The upfront costs for commercial vendors is my understanding. So, do, would it be helpful, you guys, for me to read through what some of the towns do did? I, here's the menu of what I've. Research we got. Um, Nevada, San Rafael, Ross, Mill Valley, San Anselmo. Palo Alto, so Palo Alto notably just hired a full time code enforcement officer to force their leaf blower ban. Which I'm not in favor of, but.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of firing somebody to do this and I'd rather have if my alarms going off. P D come over to my house as opposed to go check out whether or not somebody was blowing. With a gas powered leaf blower.
Yeah, and regionally, I think a few other towns have done buyback programs, but they haven't paired that with a ban. And so I think. My understanding, some of those buyback programs without the ban or any indoor, any ordinance, like no one's used it, so. Um.
Redwood City did a buyback too.
Yeah, I think nobody, you know, if anybody, I think nobody used it.
Yep, they were first.
So.
Who was first?
Redwood City did.
Yeah, before the state, before the state.
How much?
How much was it?
You make sure you use your mics up on it. Can't hear you.
Oh, sorry. I don't remember, but they thought that they were gonna run out of money and they didn't surprisingly, so. That's kind of interesting too. But I think you didn't have to be commercial. I think anyone could bring in their thing and exchange it.
So then the other thing a lot of towns in Marin did was that they restricted the use of electric leaf blowers. For certain hours. It, they are quiet, more quiet, but I think from my. Read of Marin, it was a lot more noise focused, less environmental focused. And so. The electric leaf blowers also had restricted use compared to what prior to the whole ordinance, any leaf blower could have. So. Yeah.
Can I add one? Can I add one more thing?
Yeah.
One, there's the other part of this that we hadn't talked about is the actual sound issue. And if you recall, we just passed a sound ordinance that said that you can't have a party. Playing above X number of D B's and someone can pull those numbers up for me. And these blowers are higher than all of that. So they're louder than the part of D B that we may have missed.
They're during the day, not at ten o'clock at night.
But if you have a child, that's still isn't, it's still annoying. It's still annoying. There's fifty percent of the people are annoyed by it and fifty are not, so.
That's right. Fifty percent of the people, when we did our survey, said no. And another fifty percent said yes, and so.
Uh, let me say something. You opposed reducing the maximum noise ordinance. Below seventy five D B A, which is about what a leaf blower is, and you wanted to let that go until midnight. I think that's outrageous and I I'm not gonna vote to. Uh, make sure that the baby during the day isn't awake when you don't want anyone to sleep at night, so.
Well, let me clarify.
You've had the floor.
Sorry.
Other people get the floor. Maybe, maybe, but I I. There, there was a dispute around the noise ordinance, which I thought was outrageous and I said it and I still think it is because I think people have a right to sleep. I think babies have a right to sleep too, but but I think that. Seventy five D B A, which is about the noise of a leaf blower, is way too noisy. So if you want to re raise that. Little argument, we can do it because I'm very strong about that. I have a few other things to say about leaf blowers. I.
Can I at least address what?
No.
Clarify?
No, you can interrupt me anytime you want, but.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, so the state is banning all gas blowers. As of January first.
The sale of.
Oh, the sale of all gas floors as of January first, twenty twenty four. So I think the recommendation that Atherton banned them at some point makes sense. They're not gonna be sold. Uh, my biggest problem with the leaf blowers. Since we don't have any problem with seventy five D B A of music, is not the noise from the leaf blowers. It's the pollution that's caused by the gas leaf blowers, which are two, mostly two stroke engines. And I think very polluting. So I'm sympathetic to the idea of banning those. It looks like the state. State is taking action to initiate that by banning the sale. Um, I think that, uh, and there's lots of communities around us that have banned either the sale or the use, probably more the use. I I like that idea. Um, I agree with the premise. That we shouldn't be going after gardeners, but it makes more sense to have the residents enforce the rule. And my guess is not many residents in- inform their gardeners about the educational event that's gonna come up. But if we were to ban. Uh, gas powered leaf blowers at some point, then it's more likely that those residents will inform their gardeners. As that man is coming around. as that man is coming around. Um, although I think Diana's point that we only respond to objections in terms of code enforcement is a, is a good point. And uh, for the most part, people may just skate on this. Probably that's true, but, but I think that I personally think there's a pollution problem and I also think there's a noise problem. And I, I, I feel confused about what to do about the noise problem, given the other issue. But, but I guess I think that if we are going to ban gas-powered leaf blowers, we ought to look at least at the costs of doing a rebate. Because that makes sense and we should, to the extent the state commercial rebate is something that, you know, gardeners in Califor- in, in Atherton could benefit from. We ought to help make that, those funds available to encourage them to take advantage of that. Uh, anyway, those are my initial thoughts.
So, looking at how Marin County.
Let's, let's see if Elizabeth has something to say. Okay, before we start getting our double time.
Get your rebut that I, what I voted for, just to be clear, can I just say? That I did not vote to keep it till midnight. I wanted to keep the rules that were in place since nineteen ninety-nine. I just didn't wanna make it earlier. I wanted to keep the rules that have been in place since nineteen ninety-nine. I didn't vote to make anything, you know, louder or longer. I was just voting not to change.
But there was a movement to, to reduce it. That's where I think Rick and I disagreed with you and the others. But anyway, Elizabeth, please.
So, gas-powered leaf blowers are a nuisance in our community. I think everyone, everyone agrees with that, especially when you've got dueling uh, properties, having uh, gas-powered blowing going on and on and on. And especially some of the larger properties, it's not just once a week. They have their gardeners there two, three times a week. And even though our properties are large, they are like right across the street from me, you know, right across this way. I mean, they just, it's, it's very, very noisy. And especially when they go out into the right of way to get all the little, you know, leaves that have fallen onto the ground. And then you get all of the soot and all of the gravel, all of the car um, exhaust droppings and oil. And it's being blown up and you're walking your baby, you know, around the corner. You're walking your dog and it is billowing and billowing plus the noise. I really am very, very um, opposed to continuing uh, gas-powered um, uh, leaf blowers. I think that the same thing could be done without it with electric leaf blowers or with raking and have it still be um, uh, as effective. Uh, with the state taking the first step to ban the sale of it in twenty twenty-four, they're sending a signal. They are sending a signal to the state of California, up and down, this giant state that you, you're not gonna be able to buy these pieces of equipment anymore because we think they're bad. And you know, in a short while, they, they will have a ban on it. It will be, you know, they're gonna phase them out and then it will be an all-out ban because our air is being polluted. We have a lot of problems with that. I, I agree that the vendor, the uh, gardeners, the uh, you know, day worker that you've hired um, to uh, do your yard, they should not be penalized. You are in control of directing that employee or that company of how you want your roses clipped, how you want your uh, lawn mode and you know, how you want your house uh, serviced. And so that's where the buck stops. So there's, there should be no uh, confusion about if there is a fine or some kind of a um, uh, illegal activity that is charged uh, if you break the rules. So how, so then how do you implement this philosophy? Clearly, there are other communities uh, nearby us who have been doing it and you know, fits and starts over the last few years. And you know, maybe they're just more progressive than us. But I think an educational uh, approach to our residents, given the fact that come uh, January twenty twenty-four, the state's gonna not allow you to replace a broken uh, two-stroke with an, you know, an equal uh, piece of equipment. We need to let people know that. And in the wake of that uh, new law coming, we are encouraging um, the uh, discontinued use uh, for all of our properties. And um, uh, create some kind of a rebate, a buyback or you know, kind of give them all the information they, uh, that we can give them about getting um, subsidies to replace those uh, pieces of equipment. I've been working with my gardeners and they don't use gas power anymore. I have a smaller property, my gardeners, I have a smaller property than all y'all. So uh, it's not as big and bold and you know, there's not a lot of heavy wet leaves or whatever under, you know, and they do rake them out from under uh, the, the shrubberies. But um, it, it's not an impossible task. But you know, my next door neighbor, their gardeners come, across the street neighbor, their gardeners come, the one over there, they garden, you know, and it's like all day long, on Fridays and then on Wednesdays.
Excuse me. Okay.
Oh, I must have said something wrong, Mona.
No, I don't know. Are you done?
I'm done.
Mona, would you like to make a comment?
Yes, please. Thank you. Just one um, technicality that I want you to be aware of. So the, the lawn question here is Assembly Bill thirteen forty-six that starts to phase out um, the sale of what they call small off-road engines. The acronym is SOAR equipment. Um, and that applies not just to leaf blowers, but things like lawn mowers and edgers potentially. So we're keeping the discussion focused on leaf blowers, but state law, when it goes into effect, actually captures much more equipment than that. And I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Yeah, but the, the one thing here is, is that the, the law also says um, where available or where applicable, because you have to be able to buy something that was reasonable in price and things like that. So there was, there was an out that would allow the, the legislature to extend that date. So I think that, you know, I, I agree with you that we need to be aware that all these things are coming. Um, but at the same time, I believe that, uh, you know, let's just focus on what the, the one problem we've got right now and, and try.
I think it's good that she explained it and gave us uh, information on that.
Yeah.
So, but the leaf blower, gas-powered leaf blowers is encompassed in that definition.
Well, they're the ones that are used the most.
And I add that Menlo Park in their ordinance did include not only gas blowers, but str- string leaf, string, whatever those are. What are they?
Weed whacker things.
A weed whacker, yeah. So they have both of those in there, July twenty-fourth.
All right.
Good question. Is, is SB thirteen forty-six, does it phase out two-stroke um, garden equipment or any gas-based garden equipment?
No, two, two-stroke. Its focus was two-stroke.
No, I think it's.
I thought it was gas.
Yeah, I think it's all.
Right, right.
Alright, fine. I would have misspoke, sorry.
Um, Mr. Mayor and Council, you guys have been talking around this issue for a couple of years. And, and to several points here, this isn't hard to implement as long as what we're going to implement is clear. So if the council said, beginning January one, twenty twenty-four, consistent with state law, we are also banning the use of gas-powered leaf blowers in Atherton. We're gonna start warning you from today forward. And on July first of twenty twenty-four, we're gonna start fining you. And we're gonna develop a rebate program for homeowners to, you know, purchase electric leaf blowers. Uh, we're gonna start working on that now. We'll get that implemented as soon as it's set up. The only real question, if that's something you don't agree to or do agree to, the only other question is, spare the air days. How do we handle spare the air days? Is it gonna be whenever AQMD recalls one at a hundred or more, which is orange, I think in their category? Or is it any spare the air day or is it just PM ten days, PM two-point-five days, or is it not at all?
Yeah, so uh, just as an amendment to, to what you indicated. I think that I, I agree with some sort of rebate, but I think that it's the rebate after they've gotten the state rebate. And if there's additional costs associated with what they didn't get paid for by the state to keep them whole.
Well, uh, uh, in terms of the rebate, we, we could just do it for homeowners. The state's dealing with vendors.
Alright, okay. Well, you didn't, that wasn't clear. But yeah, for homeowners, I, I, that's, that's a good idea.
That's what Portola Valley did.
I, I think that we should not just limit a rebate program to homeowners. I think we should also include a rebate program for anyone who works at an Atherton property. Um, then they may have to, you know, we have to figure out how that works in terms of confirming. Cause we don't want people coming in from all over the world to get our whatever hundred-dollar rebate.
Be steady.
Uh, uh, but I, I think it's not hard to confirm that somebody works for an Atherton property owner.
Well, they have a business license with us. We.
Oh, my guess is there's a lot of gardeners that don't have business licenses.
And that would get them licensed.
Maybe it would.
And, and there's the challenge of, okay, I bought this piece of equipment. I'm gonna get the rebate from Menlo Park and I can get the rebate from Portola Valley and I'm gonna make copies of the receipt.
Possible.
I think that's.
It probably, and that, that it's not, they probably don't have large bank accounts.
Yeah.
Uh, I don't think that's the biggest problem in the world myself. I, I guess I, I'm a little bit more concerned about the idea of how we would enforce the spare the air day issue. Who know, I don't even know when it's a spare the air day now, let alone an orange spare the air day or whatever. I, I, I tend, I, I also think that if we could start the rebate program sooner, let's say we started the rebate program this July first. I, I don't see a problem with starting the rebate program before we say uh, two-stroke uh, yard equipment is banned. Uh, I, I think that uh, we could do the rebate, you know, as soon as staff can manage that. And there are a lot, obviously a lot of particulars that staff needs to work out in terms of how that would work. Uh, but I, I agree with what Bill said, that we should require that they seek to get whatever reimbursement they could get from the state. And I suppose we can have the rule that they can't get reimbursement. I don't know how you do it, more than the cost of the equipment from multiple communities if they were doing that. But I don't know how you enforce that.
Uh, I think we just set a dollar amount and say you have to provide proof of a license in Atherton? That you're operating in Atherton, if it's a vendor or a homeowner, address in Atherton and show us the receipts and you get the.
That seems reasonable to me.
Is this money that came out of our budget and would we say not to exceed X amount of money?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we've set a cap, so the first come, first served.
And they have to have a business license here.
So, about the spare the air day? Um, if we're banning them, it doesn't matter.
Spare the air applies to both electric and gas.
Oh, I see.
I think, I think, you know, Carol's brought up a good point, you know, but it's, people don't necessarily know what it, what, what it is. And so, uh, and since, you know, as, as uh, Diana was pointing out, a spare the air day by the air quality management department or organization does not necessarily give you air, you know, particulate matter or you know, call spare the air day on particulates. And so, um, you know, if you remember back when we had the orange skies, I can understand the orange skies. But, but we were, we were under a spare the air day for twenty-three or twenty-five days in a row.
Right.
And so that means that no one would get their yard blowed off unless you, you know, have an abundance of rakes, which, you know, maybe they could buy rakes, but.
But, but if we ban.
That, those are severe, extreme uh, situations that do not happen on a seasonal.
Yeah, I agree. I agree, but that's what she brought up.
We can say we encourage the use of rakes on spare the air days.
Yeah.
We could also just educate people with more statistics on what is actually blowing up than what I was saying before, because there's actual real numbers and they're scary. So that part of our educational outreach could be educating people on why we shouldn't. And the one other thing I will add, based on the people that are in this room, people that have kids know when it's spare the air day because they cancel school. So one of the things that ADAPT and part of our volunteer message we're trying to get out is to get older adults who don't have kids in school to be aware because the air quality in this area has gotten so bad that it's literally, you shouldn't even be outside at all, anybody on some of the days. So, and not everybody knows that. People with kids know because their kids don't go to school. So this is not a problem that's gonna go away and we're gonna have to figure out how to deal with it. And at minimum, we should provide education on it.
So somebody pulled up on our screens here. This is something from.
Yeah, this, this is the uh, air quality, Bay Area Air Quality Management Spare the Air Day Particulate Matter Days that were called uh, for particulates that are two-point, two-point-five or greater. So they've called, they called eight in twenty twenty-two, they called five in twenty twenty-one. Twenty twenty was a bad year.
That's a bad year.
There were forty-six of them. But it has the record of, of the ones that were called.
But in seventeen, there was twenty-eight.
Yeah.
And twenty eighteen was eighteen. I mean, I mean, there was a lot of fires, yeah. There was the fires.
And you could do this as a, a warning for a period of time instead of an actual citation. You could do it as just education.
Yeah.
Well, at minimum, we should do education. I think we should do outreach. And I think ADAPT has to, on the, the really orange day, ADAPT went and put things in people's mailboxes, telling people, because we were getting questions like, can my dog go outside? You know, it, it, it really was bad. We have to think back of how bad it was and there will be more days like that, so.
You need a really big loudspeaker to broadcast.
I think we just do education on spare the air days. We can post something on our website, but I, I, I just, I can't see.
You get alerts on your phone. You get alerts on your phone when there's a spare the air.
It's on the news, it's on your phone right now.
Yeah, but that's spare the air day. She wants it on only particulate matter days, but they're smaller.
Spare the air days are slightly different in that, that not everybody gets spare the air day. But on the, the things like when the schools are closed, when it's, it's, it's on the national news.
Yeah, but the schools are closed on spare the air days, not on particular.
They're on smoke days. They don't do it by spare the air day, otherwise they would miss too much school. So they're based on, on the uh, they're based on the orange, what George was saying. So they, they're based on if they're above a certain particulate matter. It's not spare the air day, because remember, some of those are not even smoke days. Some of those are ozone days, ozone, that's what I was trying to come up with. Ozone days. They can call spare the air day for ozone, which is not affecting what we're talking about, so.
So, I mean, every Friday, Anthony puts out a, you know, Atherton online. We can have a regular section in there about how to connect, about spare the air days and, and that sort of thing. They go to residents mostly, so you're not gonna pick up the gardeners or landscapers in town, but certainly residents for education.
Yeah.
All right. I don't think a leaf blower ordinance is the home for spare the air, air day education.
I think I'd like to find out if there's a, if there's a res- you know, somebody making a, a resolution here. We can move forward on this thing, because we can talk this thing to death. We can talk this thing to death. Okay?
And why we take apart the individual parts? So whether or not some of the questions were who, we seem to all agree that it would be the residents who gets the fine.
They're, they're the responsible party.
Right, so we, and I didn't hear anyone disagree with that, so why don't we go with what we all agree on?
Oh, yeah, Mayor, you would like to make a comment?
Okay, public comment. We're gonna be here forever.
Another fifteen minutes.
Meeting's over in twelve minutes.
Yeah.
Whether we're done or not, so we can either make a resolution or not, I don't care.
Uh, fir- first of all, a point of order, are we having a discussion about Holbrook Palmer Housing tonight or not? Uh, first of all, a point of order, are we having the discussion about Holbrook Palmer Housing tonight or not? That's, that was on the agenda, wasn't it?
No.
No.
When when is that discussed?
March fifteenth.
March, okay. All right, two comments before I mention this. First of all, I'm doing this. As a citizen, not as a member of the 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 environmental committee, but I think if you ask the environmental committee. They have a different view than you guys have, to be honest. Uh, before I talk about my issue with what you're about to do, make two, two broader points. One is. I take, was it Sandy? Was that his name? I take his view very strongly, which is. Really? This is what you should spend your time doing? With all the things we have to worry about in Atherton. This is something you really have to, you guys should spend your time and my money doing. Um, I find that bizarre. It's going to take care of itself anyway, for all the, all the state and local laws, you know. It's gonna, it's gonna be outlawed in January. These things last two years max in the hands of anybody. It's all going to go away. Uh, so why we would spend your time outside legal time, anybody else's time writing an ordinance? Is beyond me. And then when you say, oh, we'll write the ordinance, but we won't enforce it. What? Why would you ever write something you're not going to enforce? It makes absolutely zero sense. Why would you spend money to do this? Additionally, when you go back to the survey that was taken, it was fifty fifty, but it was really skewed. Because the only people that really knew that survey was going on were hustled up by a lot of people looking to have a vote for it. It's, I mean, because it was a very small number and and if the overall members of the community, I think would be much greater than fifty against. Uh, you can shake your head, but I guarantee you that's true. Now, let me talk about the real issue. The real issue is. I love you guys. You're working hard, you do a great job. You don't have the data. You are speaking without the facts, without the data. You have agreed to spend money to get the data on the twenty eighth of March in this room, twenty ninth of March. In twenty eight days, if you come here, you can quiz the guys who actually know the answers to what you're saying. You get the real numbers. Who has, who has banned what? What are the decimals being used where? Which which town has done what? Where have they had their experience? What equipment does what, what, what decimals, which ones work, which ones don't? Uh, and all the, all the various incentives to go get, get money to to replace these. And the goal is these guys know that January one, we can, we can, we can, we can publicize them more. January one, they can't buy anything new. That's that's not better operated. They're coming here to learn that. Our job should be to get them here and educate them. Education, not legislation. The goal here is to get these people in the people to make a decision on their own, not shove it down their throats. And and I think that's the goal of of the county. I think leaders lead, they don't, they don't demand. I think your job is to lead these people, not to tell them what to do. And with education and what you find is the guys coming here. The places they've worked on, they're all green now. They're all battery. And it's done in a fashion which is done harmoniously without causing hate and discontent. And when I hear all these things, you're saying, well, we can span it this day, but then, remember. I, it makes no sense to spend that money. It's just bizarre. So the, so what I urge you is this, in fact, I'd be happy, I think we can change this. If if the, if the council wants their own twenty minute education session. For who does what, what the numbers are, all the facts are. Before the session on the twenty eighth, twenty ninth, we should do that. Because I don't think you have the data. I think you all got those snippets of data, many of which is wrong. And it changes. These guys do know it because that's how they make their money. That's how they make money. They go and say, look, you can get this rebate. Here's what this does. This one doesn't work, this one does. And we're trying to gather the data and we don't have it all. These guys do. So let's go to, let's go to the horse's mouth and get the answer. So if you want to make the decision, I'm arguing you don't have the data. Get it on the twenty ninth.
How many people who've signed up so far?
I don't know, but it's probably, you know, it's probably not a lot. But why, why, what does that have to do with it?
Because I, the point I was making earlier is I love that we're doing that session, but I'd like to get more bang for the buck and I'd like to. Announce whatever we're going to announce today or at least tell people about the.
Well, people should know that it's going to be banned in January, January to buy them.
But they don't necessarily, so.
Well, we could tell them that. That, that we should definitely tell them.
But try to do it at a time when we got more people, then I think we're going to get in the week.
Well, it it it's in motion. It's fine. You know, we're just going to continue on and.
If just five of you showed up, it'd be worth every penny.
Number of people and I don't think we're anywhere near.
Right, and so we're probably not, and that that's fine. Yeah, good, okay.
If you justify it, you should have twenty minutes, it'd be worth every penny.
He's, are you crafting? Yes, through the mayor.
I'll make a motion.
Any questions for me? I'm done then.
No.
Is he done?
Thanks.
I think it's been a fascinating conversation, which is why I stayed. And I do think you've done a lot of research. And a year ago, I saw the research the town did and it was extensive. It matched the research that I did, but a couple of thoughts as I've heard your discussion. First of all. The city council is here not for your opinions, but for the residents. And we have a split opinion amongst the residents. And what that says to me is that we need some phasing in and some compromise. You know, that we're not, the two sides aren't going to get everything they want. I'd like to keep gas leaf blowers forever, but that's not going to happen and. You know, I'm going to have to migrate over to electric at some point. But remember, our landscapers are not all big companies. Many are very small mom and pop. I've had three landscapers in Atherton. None of which have been a big company. I have one right now. It's a guy who comes around in his truck. Is he going to go spend eighteen hundred dollars for the batteries and the the blower? No, am I going to do it if I have to? Yes, I am. But to think he's going to, he hardly speaks English. To think that he's going to go file for a rebate. And God knows how long he's going to wait in the state of California to get it. It's going to be long after. He's got to have the electric blower in his truck. Okay. Am I going to pay for it? Of course, I'm going to pay for it if the town says do that. Um, but it's not big companies, landscape companies that are working here. So I think a phased in approach is better. Second, thirdly, fourthly, whatever I'm on. The landscapers don't just do Atherton, they do Menlo Park, they do Redwood City. It seems to me like a better approach would be to kind of dovetail what Menlo Park is doing perhaps. As our guy does Menlo Park as well. And have a schedule that's maybe a little bit more consistent with that. And lastly, in terms of the schools being canceled. Most of our kids don't go to public school, they go to private school. I don't think the private school is canceled for spare the air day.
Yes, they do. They do. They do.
Well, my kids haven't been in school in a while.
That's a new problem.
Good. I just. I just don't see myself sitting around looking at the app. I don't see. My landscaper who hardly speaks English looking at it. I just think it's an implementation issue. I I like. The reason for it. I like that a lot, but when you think about it. Our landscapers on our street, our particular street, the ones that we live on, one day a week. Now, yes, we do go all over, but I don't walk the whole town. You know, I walk, I walk once a week with my neighbors and we go maybe. Four streets, you know, and those four streets happen to have the same trash day. So I I would ask you to think about what Menlo Park is doing, if they're going to phase it in. I would ask you to think about the fact. That we have a split city on this and maybe a phased approach would be more thoughtful about it. And to think about how we're going to pragmatically implement whatever you decide as as a person. You know, not as a a rule in the town, but as a person, what am I going to do with my landscaper? How am I going to let him know about things or? How am I going to help him to pay for this and implement it? And how are we going to get a credit from the state of California? That's la la land. Thank you.
Okay, so we've got two minutes. Where, where's that?
Got a motion.
Yeah, go ahead, Rick.
Okay, so I've got a motion and I'll entertain amendments. Uh. My motion is number one, that staff focus on education. And um, provide education to residents about. Uh, the benefits and I'm sure this will be done over multiple. Communications in our email blast on the benefits of electric over gas, so focus on the. Uh, polluting impact of two-stroke engines and that the state is banning their sale as of January first. Um, and other education related things such as the spare the air. Uh, day problems with particulate matter being raised in the air by. Uh, blowers and noise and um, staff can. Figure out what education to do, but I think the focus should be on education and in particular. Uh, advising residents that if to talk to their. Gardeners slash landscapers and if they are. Uh, uh, exchanging their gas powered blowers for electric blowers, make a judgment about whether it makes the most sense to buy batteries. Because I can imagine that if you have, you know, one. Uh, uh, gardener going to multiple houses, they, it would. They're, they're, the only way you can coordinate multiple residents getting the proper battery for. That gardener's blower is for the gardener to communicate to the residents and then the residents will go buy the battery because it makes sense. For people to have batteries, but the edu, I'll leave the educational need and the way to articulate that to staff. I'll just. State in my motion that a a principal focus should be education. Number two.
Can we just take that part first?
No, I'm making a motion. You can amend it. I'm making a motion.
I want to, I I want to amend that.
You can amend it. I get to make a motion. I get to make a motion, then you get to amend it. I haven't finished.
Go on, let's go on. She'll remember.
Number one, education. Number two, that Atherton ban. Two-stroke gas powered yard equipment as of. July first, two thousand and twenty four, as Menlo Park does, and we be clear. That we're coordinating with our neighboring communities. And number three. That Atherton provide a rebate to any resident or. Business licensee that works in Atherton. In an amount to be determined, which I would think should be a minimum of a hundred dollars and perhaps more. And if we can qualify that they get a state rebate if available, that they first apply for that. And that it be pursuant to a rebate program as staff will recommend to us. And I'm not including anything in the motion regarding penalties.
Okay, so Elizabeth.
So I agree with. Majority, but going back to the first. Section of your.
The education.
The agent, I would uh, like to direct staff to uh, really focus on. How the state is opposing it and proposing it and use their language so that we are kind of. Syncing up with their rationale because any uh, statistics that you put out there about reasons and why. You're going to get shot down.
Great, I accept that amendment.
Right.
Then uh, secondly, about you, you were, the other part about just the two-stroke. I think that we need to broaden that because I don't think that the state is only doing a two-stroke.
No? Okay, then make it all gas. Okay, I'll accept that amendment.
Okay.
I did not, I thought it was two-stroke.
No.
Okay, I just want to be consistent with what others are doing.
And and I like the fact that uh, you were saying, you know, that we're going to try to uh, uh, work. Uh, dovetail with our neighboring jurisdictions, but I don't know how.
Well, the July, the July first, two thousand and twenty four ban date does that.
Yeah, okay. So anything else? So that was my amendments.
Can I make an amendment?
Sure.
Um.
You can propose.
Or propose an amendment, okay. Whatever words we want to.
Yeah, no, it's, it's the mover that has to accept it and I moved, I accepted both of them.
Start a mover.
Okay, so. I propose or I'm whatever, um. One of the things I thought was very clever that Marin did was to have a period of time between the. Ban coming into place and the actual financial enforcement coming in place. So I would. Propose that we have our ban take place sooner, like this July. With the financial penalty coming in in tandem with Menlo Park and then we can use our warning. System to test it out and also use that as an opportunity for public education.
Okay, I I don't accept that amendment, so we can vote on that separately.
Yeah, I don't accept it either because, you know, I don't want PD running around to talk to people with blowers.
Well, may, maybe I should give you the rationale. I, first of all, I really think it's important that we be consistent with our neighboring jurisdictions. And the most important being Menlo Park because I think there's a lot of. Gardeners that do work in Menlo Park and Atherton. And I, so I think making the ban on. Jan, uh, July first, two thousand and twenty four is good because it's consistent. I didn't include a penalty phase. I think we, we've got a year and a half before. The ban comes into effect and we can figure out how to enforce and what the penalty would be. I agree with you, there should be a time period. But I'd make that time period, that penalty, if we decide to do a penalty, I think. It'll be more accepted by Atherton residents if you're not coming in with a hammer. So if there's not a penalty initially, then the focus will be on education. And so I I would rather not have a penalty be approved yet.
I think, isn't Menlo Park starting January one and then enforcement starts July?
No, we're, we have not discussed the penalty. That's what Rick was and I agree with that because I don't want. Penalty is established so that PD comes back and says, I need to hire another code enforcement officer.
I I really agree that we, we need to have more thought about the penalties and how the penalties are going to be enforced. But uh, what you, I don't know that you indicated that the responsible party in enforcing this has to be the resident.
Well, we'll do that.
That's the intent.
Add that, okay.
Is that the intent?
Can you add that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll add that.
Excellent.
So I second that. You, you, okay.
George, you have a comment?
Yeah, just a couple of comments. One is, if the PD goes out to enforce, in in most cases, they're probably going to issue. Warnings before they issue any sort of citation. And if there's a of. A violation that's just recurring and they can't get that individual. To stop, then they're going to issue a penalty to the homeowner, but it's going to be a series of contacts along the way. Um, so I don't think that's going to be a huge issue. And and to uh, council member. Holland's point, I think Menlo Park is, their ban goes into effect January twenty, twenty twenty four and they start enforcing it. July of two thousand and twenty four.
Oh, is that right?
Right.
The ban goes into effect January first?
So that's what I thought you were saying.
Sorry, then I would make it January. I mean, I, I would think we should be consistent with Menlo Park. I I.
We have their thing.
Yeah, let me pull that up.
So you can figure it out. If it's January first, I'd make it January first of the July first, twenty twenty four, I'd make it July first. I think it's important to be consistent. With another community and not just stand on our own.
Well, I think.
But we don't have a penalty. There's no penalty here.
I think if we end up wanting to be consistent with it, then over time. Uh, everybody's going to have a ban in place and we're going to just benefit from everybody else's ban.
So here's, here's Menlo Parks and it's a lot different than I thought, sorry. Uh, they're actually just considering the ordinance. They are not actually, it hasn't been adopted yet. It says if approved. Use of gas powered leaf blowers and string trimmers, weed whackers, will not be allowed starting July of two thousand and twenty four. Uh, in use of gas powered gardening equipment would not be allowed starting July of other gas powered equipment, July of two thousand and twenty nine.
And this is about the fourth time they brought it to the council and so it may not get approved at all.
I I'm okay to, we, we can always make adjustments if we choose to, but I think going with July first, two thousand and twenty four. For an Atherton ban is the thing that makes sense.
Can we get this, if we pass this? Motion, can we review the resolution, but but, you know.
The ordinance has to come back to you.
Before it gets.
Well, the staff has to draft that.
Good, okay, so I think we have another bite at the apple or swing at the bat or.
Yeah, something like.
I'll second your motion.
Okay, so we motion and amended and seconded by the vice mayor. Call for the vote, mayor.
Yeah, we have a vote. Go ahead.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Go along with you all, but I necessarily have my heart in.
All right, you can be fine.
Okay.
Any notice?
Right, fine. Uh, any other public comments? Saying not, and I will.
Really reasonable.
I think it's reasonable too, because it's already going to affect January anyways.
Yeah. Any, any, uh, no, it's a stale.
It's happening.
Not the use.
Yeah, thank you.
That's the problem.
Yeah, people need to know before all that.
I assume that we voted to adjourn.
Yeah, thank you.
Right.
Okay, well, I have to.
Would you like another one to do around another meeting?